I call this meeting of the Eden Central School Board of Education to order. And I have to write down the time, too.
Pledge of allegiance.
Okay, our first order of business is we are going to administer the oath of office to newly elected board members. Patty Kraus, repeat after me, please. I do solemnly swear, or affirm.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Board of Education.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Did you say congratulations?
Welcome.
Paul? I do solemnly swear, or affirm.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Board of Education.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Oh, good point, but that actually comes down here.
Okay.
The president gets to do that, the real president. Okay, the next order of business is to vote for president. Do I have any nominations for president?
I nominate Michael Burns.
Second.
Okay, any other nominations? Okay, I think we still have to do the show of hands for Michael Burns for president. Show of hands.
Aye.
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 Okay. Okay, nominations and balloting for vice president, nominations for vice president?
I nominate Michael Breeden.
Second?
Second.
Any others? Okay, show of hands, please.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm staying. Okay, thank you very much, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, the new president will take over. Michael, it's all yours. And afterward, I need signatures from people.
Thank you, Madam President, for, you were, for a moment.
And you can start with the pledge.
Should we move?
Yes.
You don't want to look at my grandson?
I only care your water. I'll be like, well, you got some already.
This one, Barbara. Do you see the one around? Is it the right one?
Do you want to do the pledge?
Where'd you go?
We should probably swear here. Should we swear you in?
Yes.
We, excuse me, appoint in first. Yep, we can do that as part of the next, next batch.
Okay, now let's stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance.
To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no bounds. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of president of the Board of Education.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of forepresident.
According to the best of my ability. And now, Mr. Breeden?
Yes.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of vice president.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the vice, office of the vice president.
Of the Eden Central School Board of Education.
Of the Eden Central School Board of Education.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I do solemnly swear, or affirm.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
District clerk.
Of the district clerk.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Did we want her, wants to read? I guess I will.
Hi, you want me to read?
Go ahead.
Doesn't matter. Can you just move the mic, Mrs. Henry?
Yeah.
I have one question. When does public comment action?
Okay, which number do I start with?
Start with number?
Four. Routine actions, approval of consensus items, recommended motion that the following consensus item be approved as listed in the administrative memorandum A through E.
Second.
Discussion. Oh, sorry. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
You got to one. So that goes all the way down to E. Now we're on number five, correct? Yes. Request to withdraw specific items from consensus items. Routine actions, approval of consensus items, recommended motion that the, we already did A through E.
No, this is a different.
That the following consensus items be approved as listed in the administrative memorandum A through E.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
New business, resignations, recommended motions, resignation, recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of elementary cafeteria monitor Betty Dunwoodie be accepted effective June 20th, 2013, the Board of Education and Administration wish to thank Mrs. Dunwoodie for her two years of service to the Eden Central School District.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Appointments, recommended motion, appoint, appoint technology education teacher, recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Matthew Ceramek, who is initially certified in technology education, be appointed on probation as a technology teacher effective September 1st, 2013, and ending August 31st, 2016. Salary is based upon ETA contracts, step one.
Second.
Discussion.
He's here tonight. I'd like to meet him. He's here. Mr. Graff, is there anything that you'd like to say? Where's Mr. Graff? He was, there you are. Anything about Matt?
Matt comes also with the experience from Lake Shore District. Very highly recommended. I've never in my 18 years had so many calls about one individual candidate of all over the place. So we're excited to have him. I can see a great fit for us.
So, welcome, welcome. Point occupation, oh.
We haven't voted. There's a vote on that.
Oh, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Appoint occupational therapist, recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, John Robbins, who is a certified occupational therapist, be appointed on probation as occupational therapist effective July 2nd, 2013, and ending January 1st, 2014. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level. Sixteen? Step one.
Second.
Discussion.
He's here. Well, I'd like to know a little bit about this because it says it's only till January 1st, 2014? Because he's in the CSEA contract in the civil service employees, a six-month probationary period, which is different than a teacher who's on a three-year probationary period. This would be more similar to a clerical position or any of the others. Because we've been looking for this person for a long time. We've been looking for this person for a really long time. Yes, we have. And I was wondering, why only six months? Oh, no, it's not that he's only here that long. It said he's on probation that long. Sean, would you like to introduce him? And we have been looking for this person for a really long time.
And I found him. This is genial. It was great because I received calls before I even interviewed him that if I'd hired this person, I was crazy. And he did wonderful. We have lots of candidates, which was impressive. We are blessed to have him here. His experience with both schools, huge, huge, night one. So, we welcome him and we have a voting finally. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Appoint voting delegates, recommended motion that, I don't know, I don't have a name on here, be appointed as a voting delegate to the annual business meeting of New York State School Board Association and that so-and-so be appointed alternate. I'm planning on going.
I'm hoping to go.
I'm gonna go.
I would like to go, but I don't know, but confirm yet.
You signed your paperwork.
Would you want it? Would you?
Yeah, I'll take it.
And then?
What's the call?
Are you going, Paul?
Are you willing, Paul? Yeah, I'm planning on going, so I could be the alternate. Barb could be the primary, doesn't matter, leave whatever works.
Either way, Paul, doesn't matter.
Yeah, I'm planning on attending it.
Yep. Have you, have you gone to these before?
Yeah, I have gone to this conference before as a president.
Nice.
I'm comfortable with that. And then Barb would be?
But you could put Paul as primary and I'll be the alternate. It's fine. That'd be fine, I'd rather, if you don't mind.
Want to do it over?
Yes.
Can you read it again?
Okay. Appoint voting delegates, recommended motion that Paul, I forgot your last name.
Shepherd.
Shepherd. Be appointed as a voting delegate to the annual business meeting of the New York State School Board Association and that Barb Henry be appointed as an alternate.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Appoint Board of Education Subcommittee's, recommended motion that the following subcommittees of the Board of Education be established for the 2013-14 school year. Personnel, curriculum, policy, technology, facilities, negotiations, audit, and DSDMT.
What is that?
That's.
Second.
Discussion.
Would you like a clarification on any of these? Yeah. I'd like to know who's on them. So would we, that's why we have the motion. Oh, that's okay.
Should I put, I have a list of people that I thought should take on those committees, so.
No, but if we approve the motion and then announce who on what committee?
Okay. All right, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Appoint summer bus cleaner, recommended motion.
He's gonna announce.
He's gonna. I hope I have all the committees, yeah, I should. For the audit committee, I put myself and Mr. Breeden. Negotiations, Scott and Callen. Curriculum, Henry and Patty. Is that all right? Can we come back to this one? I guess we could probably just talk with them.
Sure.
Make sure that they want.
Yep.
We'll talk about it then after the meeting.
Are you gonna come back to this later in this meeting?
Yeah, we can.
Okay. Okay, appoint summer bus cleaner, recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following personnel be appointed as summer bus cleaner effective July 2nd through August 31st, 2013, or until 98.5 hours have been reached. Julianne Blenko and Dale Blanner.
Discussion.
Why do we need a cleaner?
Second.
Discussion.
Why, why do we need a cleaner over the summer?
They're still being used in the summer.
Oh, they're being used over the summer? Okay.
The different agencies are paying for it, plus also the brooms and other.
I think they do a thorough clean, thorough cleaning over the summer and clean, you know, they, they clean the insides, you know, each seat, scrub everything down. I believe that's what this is.
Like, kinda like the, all the schools, all the chairs and tables get?
Yes, and it is the exact same budget that we've had in the past year, so it's not an increase.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Approve athletic trainer services, recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, athletic trainer services for the 2013-14 school year be awarded to the athlete care in the amount of $21,600.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
I do have a discussion about this. It's athletic trainer services?
Yes.
How's that different from a?
It's basically what we've already, last year or the year and a half ago, we had re-implemented this.
Marissa's here, isn't she?
Yeah, Marissa's here.
Is that the person that helps, helps with, like, if they have concussions and stuff?
She takes care of any injuries that she, uh, concussions, everything from sprained ankles, I mean, that she calls the parents, deals with them, sets up those appointments up. She does everything, she's here from 2:30 to 5 every day, and then at all varsity and JV.
You know what, you know what I'm really asking a question on is I thought it was a person that we hire, not a service.
No, we have to go, it's better, if you go through a service, you get their insurance. If you go through a person, then they have to buy your insurance and it would be more expensive. So going through athletic care, we are now covered under Sisters Hospital Athletic Care Catholic Health Insurance.
Have we always done that?
Past three years, yes. We didn't have it, this will be our third year, we didn't have it for seven years, and it was a stretch for the, not having it with seven years. It would, if we don't have it, we would have to change our doctor services again because we are required to have doctor services at a football game, so the past couple of years we've been able to reduce the doctor fee by not having them there. I kind of want to say something, sorry.
No, finish, I'm good.
Okay, so it had, we would have to do, really change how we're looking for the new school?
No, that's okay, I just, I just was, the services I thought was an individual. That's all, that's the only question I had.
They sent us an individual and we tried to keep it the same person, which is good, but that's all through athletic care.
That was gonna be, my question is, do you anticipate that there may be a change?
No, actually, I've been in contact with athletic care this weekend and we're all set to have the same person, which is great. She's got a good rapport with the families, with the student athletes, and she's done a nice job despite her being a little bit younger.
And can you share her name again?
Kristen Zamiola. She's out of Williamsville, but she's, she's very good. I do have the unfortunate of dealing with her with the injury as well.
And she does the baselines for the concussions, too, right?
She does the baselines for the concussions, which you could pay a hefty price to do the computerized ones, but she will do the paper copies, do every single athlete in school, do a baseline on them, so none of the athlete has a concussion, they go see her after, and she can judge if they did truly have a concussion, when they're ready to go back, when, and then they have to see their physician. But she handles all that where our nurses don't have to do that, I don't have to do anything, she calls the parents, sets it up, talks to Dr. Eno, who's changing, and all that.
Thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Just ask it. Award food service management contract extension, recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the food service contract with personal touch be extended through June 30th, 2014.
Second.
Discussion.
Does anyone have any questions on that?
Did we get other bids?
Well, this isn't the bid portion, this is just basically, we didn't need a bid, we're in the first of five years, so we can just roll over the contract actually with them. So, we bid in the past, they've always been the lowest, so we have to, we do avoid the whole RRP process again this year.
Until when?
We have another four years before we have to bid again.
But we could bid anytime.
We could bid anytime, if we're dissatisfied with service, I've not heard any complaints, and again, from price, they have been, for every RRP we've done, they've been the lowest, so.
What about quality?
Quality.
We'll add you with the quality.
In my long tenure here, it's, it's a little hard for me to answer that one, so that might be better asked for someone else. I, though, quite honestly, have not heard of any complaints with their quality. They have worked very hard to, you know, expand the menu, even given the new requirements, but I've heard no complaints.
Have we ever looked at, well, I don't know if you know this, but having an in-house, you're having the district run the food service?
As far as I'm aware, we have not looked at that. Most districts tend to have an out-of-district, it costs less than if you're paying for your own in-house.
Why?
Benefits? Okay, well, I mean, just if you have a contract with a second party, personal touch, you're saving on some of the costs you would have if all the staff were all your own. I mean, we still have the line workers that we do pay as ours, but for a personal touch, they really make sure that we're all in keeping with the new laws and regulations, which is quite luminous with what's going on now with the standards, but it is more cost-effective going in-house. But we can always look at that if you want to.
Is it personal touch, this system that you put the money in, is that run by them?
That is administered by them, that is a separate system, though, but they are the ones who actually are walking the kids through the system and using the system. But it is, right, it's a separate software, so it's not theirs.
But they're in charge of the funds, is that prepayment paid?
Uh, well, the funds actually go into our banking account and we actually control that, not them.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Approve change in summer bus driver and attendant start and dates, recommend, recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, summer bus driver and attendant start and end dates be adjusted as follows. Marg Skura, July 3rd, 2013 through August 16th. Mary Terazuik, July 3rd, 2013 through August 16th, 2013. Vincent Baco, July 1st through August 16th, 2013. Kathy Keller, July 1st through August 14th, 2013. Janet Boncars, Boncars, July 1st through August 16th, 2013, and Ellen Polinsky, July 1st through August 16th, 2013. Second?
I'm sorry, second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Approve technology plan, recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the three-year technology plan be approved as presented.
Second.
Discussion. No, I looked it over, looks nice. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I'd just like to thank Lucinda for doing that.
Yes, good job.
That was really a good job, thank you. Approve accessing of special education books, recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the attached list of special education books be deemed excess and disposed of as district deems necessary.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Approve memorandum of agreement with assistant principal, recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the memorandum of agreement with Patricia Minkenna, allowing her to work 15 days in advance of September 4th, 2013, be approved as presented.
Second.
Discussion.
Would you like clarification?
Yes.
When the assistant position was reduced to a 10-month-plus days in the summer, it was 10 days in the summer plus 10 months during the school year, with the pending move of our high school principal to elementary, and also to even out the days, what I am asking is to move 15 days between September and June into the summer, one, so that she can financially plan for it, because she didn't know that it was going to be reduced, and two, so that we can plan for the upcoming school year, while Mark Graff does the elementary principal in the meantime as well.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Approve increases in lunch prices, recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the school lunch prices be increased by five cents at the Eden Junior Senior High School and by 10 cents at the GLP and Eden Elementary School effective September 4th, 2003.
Second.
Discussion. What's the difference between the two? Why is it a five-cent increase on one and 10-cent on the other?
Okay, I was just gonna ask if anyone wanted clarification on that. Actually, that is state mandated, and what they have you do is put in, and their worksheets that they provide, the data from 2010, 2011, and also what we have for this past year, 2012, 13, and that dictates how much the increases have to be at each school, so it's based on number of meals served and all that. So, their formulas have derived that at the high school, junior, senior high school, it is 5 cents and 10 cents at the elementary and GLP. So, certainly not our choosing, state mandate.
What is, what does the lunch cost?
Actually, you know what? A $1.95 and a $1.85, I believe that was the total? It's right, it's on the attachment, let me pull it up for you.
Was that with the increase?
That's, that is with the increase, that's correct. A dollar, uh, thank you, a $1.90 and a $1.75. So that's with the increase. Oh, no, let me clarify, that was this here, with the increase, it's a $1.95, which is a 5 cent differential at the junior, senior high, and a $1.85. At the elementary and GLP, correct.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I don't know why we have to approve it, one that's mandated.
State of New York.
Approve 105H memorandum of agreement with excess ETA employees, recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 105H memorandum of agreement between the excess teachers and the district be approved as presented.
Second.
Discussion.
Would anyone like any clarification?
Yes.
Okay, this actually would address, I think, both the next two, and what, for J and K, what we're actually looking at is, obviously, this year was an unusual year with the number of excess employees that we had. And so what was asked is for this year, if we were able to extend the 105H benefits, and that really is the money the district actually provides, the $300 in their account that they're able to use or reimburse medical expenses. And given the situation, we actually did say that we would look at PNA, look at what the costs actually were to do that, given the fact that it was unusual. It is a $250 cost in the plan to change it, and then the attorney fees, and with the ETA splitting half of that cost. And at that time, the CSEA said, well, we would also like to have it for our unit, and looking at both of them together, if we were to do it independently at a separate time, we would incur a second fee at that time to change the plan, as well as the attorney, so it made sense, if you're going to do it, do it all at one time.
And what's the cost to the district?
It's the $250 plus the attorney fee just to look over the document, but half of that because the ETA is splitting half of that.
Okay, the attorney fees as well?
How much, was it attorney's fee? We don't know what they are. And is this a one-time thing or? And is this a one-time thing, or is it every year?
Yes. It is one time to do this, and it does change the plan document going for, again, just for excess employees.
Okay.
And we're gonna ask the attorney to read quickly.
Good luck with that.
Approve, what, do you want to vote on this?
That was discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Approved 105H memorandum of agreement with excess CSEA employees. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 105H memorandum of agreement between the support staff and the district be approved as presented. Second.
I'll second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I just ask that we go back to Roman numeral number four, B, five?
The cleaners? What particular page is that?
It's on page four.
Credit at the top.
Time and regular monthly meetings. Is that what you're looking at?
Yes. That's the one. Did I miss it, or did we do it?
Time and...
Well, it was passed.
It was passed.
Consensus, like, so we have to pull it out, I guess.
That would be great, if you could.
Time and date of regular monthly meetings. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the regular monthly meetings generally be held on what day of each month at 7:00 PM in the junior/senior high school cafeteria, except as noted.
Well, we can't even second it in that form. I guess we have to have a discussion and see what everybody thinks about when they wanna meet. The Monday worked okay for me.
You guys have opinion on?
I like Wednesday.
Like Wednesday?
What's your feeling on that Wednesday?
I'd actually like it to be any day other than Monday, and the reason for that is because we have our administrative meetings on Thursday, which is the earliest we can do them in the week, and to pull it all together on a Friday, and then have the weekend come up on Monday, we find everybody, including the board scrambling to take a look, because weekends should be spent with family as well as yours. If, in fact, we can move those board meetings further along besides Monday, I believe that people would have a better opportunity to take a look at everything that's in it, be able to get clarifying points or to pull items, and have the time to actually look through it. Monday, Barb and I have just found to be really, really a crunch.
Anyone else have opinion?
Wednesday's worked for me.
Wednesday?
If we do the first Wednesday, that's my boys and girls club.
So not the first Wednesday?
Maybe two, how about Tuesday?
It doesn't have to be the first either. It could be, you could do the third Wednesday, the second Wednesday.
Third Wednesday, that would work. Wednesday's okay. Why don't we do it the third? Because usually the third Thanksgiving falls on that time. Was that the fourth Wednesday of Thanksgiving? No?
It's okay, Mike. It's really okay. Turkey's on his mind.
He started celebrating the day before.
I'm getting hungry now. They get dinner before coming here, so. So Wednesday, third Wednesday?
Okay. Here we go. Time and, can I, want me to reread it?
Motion. Who's gonna make the motion?
Me?
Yeah.
Time and date of regular monthly meetings. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, my thing's not on. The regular monthly meetings generally be held on the third Wednesday of each month at 7:00 PM in the junior/senior high school cafeteria.
Do we wanna do the cafeteria with the, because it says cafeteria, I would say the odd.
Well, it says, except as noted, so it can be changed.
I prefer to say odd.
Would you like some conversation? Four or five of the meetings during the school year, if they're held in the odd, will be held in the cafeteria, so we will move. If you want consistency, then you go for the cafeteria. If you like the odd better, because you feel that it's better for the audience, just know that four or five of those dates, you won't be in the auditorium, out of the 10 anyways, due to musicals or plays or concerts. It doesn't matter.
Let's say odd.
Auditorium, okay.
It's always posted on the left side anyway.
It is always posted on the, I've never said in the audience here, I think the sound is better in this room, I'm being told by people who sit, as opposed to the audience, but I don't know that. Lucinda, do you know? I mean, you guys sit here. I don't know.
I think it's better in here.
Is it easier to set up in here than it is?
Yes.
It didn't bother me.
Why is it easier to set up in here?
There's less here. You're all hearing you with, like, the chaffed mics that we normally have to set up, and setting up the camera now. It's just easier setup for us.
The camera that's got the back of their heads, that one? Okay.
I'm just glad my bald spot. Blair. I'm fine with it in here. Quick show of hands. Could be a thing. For the cafeteria?
Cafeteria?
Cafeteria. Your first law.
Missed it.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
So it's on Wednesdays?
Third.
Yeah, third Wednesday. So do we have a, is that when our meeting is? Is this July, the third Wednesday?
So the question would be for the upcoming year, the first meeting would tend to be Wednesday, July 24th?
No.
No?
You skipped that, or way to August, so it would be the 30th, 30th of August. But if you watch, there's probably a delay because we're going to put the tags on, that will be a special need.
So we can hold on that until my report, so I can explain it if you'd like.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, this is the time for that. Oh, public comment? Anyone who has a comment? Two minutes? All right. Is that one? No.
Okay. Information and proposals. We get that? Recommended motions? Hmm? No? Okay.
First up, Pat.
You're tough. So if you don't have to get up and turn around.
Oh, thank you.
Ooh, that's pretty heavy. There, here's next one. Someone can save you a trip.
Thank you.
There you are. It's right on the back of this. Ties it all together. Is it the tax rate in August that you need? Does it have to be done in the first week of August?
This is Angela, who asked me to present the code of conduct summary, so if you give me about 45 minutes, we'll tie it all on. About 10 minutes, we'll be through it. The history of the code of conduct actually began in 2001. Eden had a student code of conduct starting in 1998. So being mandated in 2001 to have a code of conduct is nothing new for us. The Dignity for All Students Act, signed into law in 2010, said that starting in 2012, we must have all our mandates met for the Dignity for All Students Act, which is harassment and everything else that the state mandated down from that. Thinking we're done in 2012, they updated again for 2013. It includes cyberbullying, reports of harassment, all investigation of our reports, our response to verified reports, all employee reporting, notification of law enforcement, professional certification, our curriculum, our guidance and educational material. We cover our professional certification through Mrs. Tammy Orcat and myself. We go away to the Obares Training Program, so we have certified professional DASSE trainers right on staff here.
Who's Tammy?
Tammy Orcat is the guidance counselor at the GLP in the elementary building.
What was her other name?
It was Tammy Finity.
Finity, Tammy Finity.
Her other name.
The introduction, the Board of Education is committed to providing Eden a safe and orderly school. We believe that responsible behavior by students, teachers, and all district personnel is essential for us to achieve this goal. Unless otherwise indicated, this code of conduct applies to all students, all school personnel, parents, and visitors when they are on school property. One of the main things is our student dress code. I'm not gonna go through and read these all three, but I'll give you a quick summary. Clothing, hairstyle, and jewelry must be safe. Students must have footwear on at all times. Skirts, dresses, and shorts must be of appropriate length, and as you all know, it's almost impossible to enforce nowadays because of the changing styles.
What's hard to enforce?
The length.
The length of these skirts, dresses, and shorts.
You have to go to a different store.
Coats and jackets, any type of outerwear cannot be worn in the building during the school day. Hats, hoods, bandana, eyeglasses, or sunglasses can't be worn. Underwear must be completely covered without impairments.
How do we do with that? Do we do well? Because I didn't do well with that at Grand Island at all.
We had a problem. We did for a while there.
I saw an awful lot of boxer shorts.
This is another tough one. Two tops, halter tops, spaghetti strap, backless, strapless tops, low cuts. Tank tops must have an appropriate strap width. That's a tough one come summer. We do our best. No type of see-through clothing is allowed. No bare midriffs are allowed. Any type of jewelry that contains, that could be used as a weapon, can't contain spikes, pins, or chains. And this is a big one that we totally reinforce, is clothing and accessory may not display racial, ethnic, gang affiliations, vulgar, subversive, or sexually suggested language or images. They cannot promote drugs, alcohol, or tobacco use.
Number 11 is always the most difficult one, because some of those t-shirts are awfully engaging, they're cute, some of them really are marketing for really good causes, and the kids will come home with them after vacation time, but in a school, even something that we might see outside of school that seems okay in school is not. Can you come up with some ideas or examples of that?
Well, we get a lot of the alcohol, like the Jack Daniels, we get some kids with the marijuana leaves, we get more things like that in the high school.
Some of the newest marketing strategies for the cancer awareness as well.
So we try, we're pretty good at that, and if we do see it, we simply ask a student to turn their t-shirt inside out, or to simply go change in their gym outfit if they have it. The backpacks are not allowed to be carried during school hours, they can be carried into and out of the school. We do allow the small soft pack, sports packs for the back, and the students are all aware of that, and it doesn't seem to be a problem anymore. Prohibited student conduct. The Board of Education expects all students to conduct themselves in an appropriate and civil manner. We do believe that discipline is self-imposed, and students must accept responsibility for their own behavior, as well as the consequences of their misbehavior. This rule listed below are intended to do that and focus on all safety and respect for the rights of others, of the rights and property of others here. Now, you're gonna see about five different headings, and I will go through them for you. They are simply, students are not allowed to engage in conduct that is disorderly or disruptive, such as running in the hallways, making unreasonable noise, using vulgar language, engaging in any lawful acts that disrupt the normal operation of the school, or any misuse of electronic or computer devices, that includes their own cell phones or iPods. They can't engage in conduct that is insubordinate, failing to comply with teacher's directions, late, or skipping classes, or skipping detention. They also cannot engage in conduct that is violent, such as hitting, kicking, punching. They cannot bring weapons onto school property. They cannot possess a weapon at school property. They cannot threaten to use a weapon at school property. Any intentional damaging or destroying of personal property of a student, teacher, administrator, or other district employee is prohibited. And this is a big one, engaging in verbal threats or intimidations or abuse that reasonably cause a person or a student to become fearful of their own self, while being. The most of this comes through right now with the cyberbullying that goes on at night through text messaging and emails, is where we're getting most of this verbal threats and intimidations from.
Is the school district at all, I mean, if something happens at off-school locations an after-hours, I mean, are we responsible for any of that stuff?
I could discuss it, but Pat, why don't you go ahead?
Yes, we are. If something happens at night through text messages or emails, and a student brings it in and brings it to my attention or a teacher's attention, and it's interfering with that student's focus on school or disrupting their school day, it is now the school's responsibility to investigate it, deal with the parents, and if necessary, contact the police. We have seven, we had, I think somewhere around 15 incidents of cyberbullying this year alone at the high school, in which we had to address with parents. That didn't happen at school, that happened after school hours.
What if it involves a student that goes to school here, but the bully or one causing trouble isn't a student in the district, it's from another district?
Then I contact the Eden Police Department and turn the name of the person outside of the school district that's causing the harassment, and now the police take it to the next step.
Is it short?
It's eight.
Any other questions on that?
Good catch. Go on.
They cannot engage in conduct that endangers the safety, moral, health, or welfare of others, such as, like, school personnel, forgery, stealing, defamation of character. The other big one through the new DASSA mandates is discrimination and race, color, age, national origin, ethnic group, or anything else that's not even listed up there, but the person feels like they are being harassed or picked at, is now something that we must address. Intimidation or extortion, internet bullying, which I said is the big one, hazing, language, smoking, and possessing, consuming, selling, or attempting to sell illegal or controlled substances. These are all the things that students can't do, so it doesn't leave them much that they can do.
Does this also go for employees?
This goes for employees also. The code of conduct encompasses all district employees and all visitors on school property.
And that's actually in your board policy?
They can't engage in misconduct on the school bus. We do have a section on school bus transportation that we go over with the students, and they cannot engage in any form of academic misconduct, which is plagiarism, cheating, copying, alternating records, or assisting another student in any of the above acts. The amount of due process a student gets depends on the penalty being imposed. We actually must inform the student of the alleged misconduct, we must investigate it, we must come up with all the facts surrounding the alleged misconduct, and then give that student the opportunity to present their version of what happened in the incident before any type of penalty is being imposed. We take into account the student's age, the nature of the offense, and the circumstances that led up to it. Did something happen outside of school that brought it inside the school to make it happen? We look at the student's prior disciplinary record, if there is another effective form of discipline that would be better than just detention or suspension. We contact the parents, the teachers, and others as appropriate to get as much information as possible, look at all other extenuating circumstances, and usually, if it is the first violation, it will merit a lighter penalty than subsequent violations. So a student's discipline file plays an important part in the next step to their penalties.
And I'm assuming if the penalty, the infraction is actually against the law, we involve the police to?
Any type of infraction that breaks the school code of conduct.
Or breaks a New York state or federal law.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So if you have a young lady that comes in here with, you know, showing too much skin...
So if you have a young lady that comes in here with, you know, showing too much skin, does that go in her file?
Every student that I see that has a penalty or a warning, it goes on their record.
Goes on their record.
And all their records are kept on an electronic file. So if I pull up a student's name, I can see how many times they saw it in my office, what disciplinary actions were taken against them, and how many times the parents were contacted. So we have a complete file on every student from grade 7 through 12. Type of penalties we have are oral and written warnings, written notification to the parent. Teachers can have classroom detention. We have school detention after school on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We can remove them from transportation, suspend them from athletic competition. We can remove them from social or extracurricular activities, such as dances or clubs. We can take away their privileges. If they have a situation in the cafeteria, we can remove them from the lunchroom. We use in-school suspension on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Teachers can remove them from the classroom if they're disruptive for a short period of time. Short-term suspension, five days or less, can be imposed by the principal, the assistant principal, or any of the principal or superintendents designees. And any long-term suspension, five days or more, or permanent suspensions can only come from the superintendent. This is a big one with students. They think their lockers are theirs, but their lockers are actually ours. Student lockers, desks, or any storage spaces in the school belongs to the school. We have the right at any time to search those places without prior notice to the student or without their consent. I'm going to tell you, if I am going to search a student locker, I will usually contact the student first, ask them if there's anything in the locker that they don't want me to find, give them the opportunity to turn it over, and then I will take them with me along with another adult before the search of the locker is conducted. Interrogations, and I hate that word, but it's up there. Any school official that can impose a disciplinary penalty can talk to a student. Students are not entitled to any type of Miranda rights. We are not required by law to contact the student parent before we question the student. School officials will tell the student why they are being questioned. And the board authorizes district employees to conduct searches of students if they believe it is going to result in evidence that the student violated the law or the district code of conduct.
Can you just clarify that one for a minute? Because you're talking about the belongings of the students, right?
If a student has a backpack in a locker, and we think there might be some drugs or alcohol or some substance that is illegal in the school, we have the right to conduct a search of that backpack.
Is the parent then noted?
The parents are always noted.
Okay.
Yes.
Whether anything was found or not?
Whether anything was found or not.
Okay.
Any other questions? This is a big one that we're trying to get the students to do more of. Report violations of the code of conduct that they see. If they see something or hear something that they feel that might be hurtful or damaging to another person, to please let someone in authority know, whether it be a teacher or some district staff, so we can look into the situation. And students are getting better at that. They're realizing that it's not, you know, if it's serious enough, they're willing to come down and share. All visitors to the school, anyone who's not a regular staff member is considered a visitor. They must report to the main office upon arriving at the school. They need to sign a guest register and follow the specific building's procedures. The building procedures are different at the high school than they are at the elementary school. So when they come to the main office, the office staff will direct them as to how they need to sign and what they need to do. Any unauthorized person on school property will be reported to the principal. Unauthorized persons will be asked to leave if they do not, we will simply call the police. And all visitors are expected to abide by the rules for public conduct on school property contained in the code of conduct. And last but not least, the Board of Education will review this code of conduct every year and update it as necessary. The code of conduct and any amendments to it will be filed with the commissioner no later than 30 days after they adopt it. We need to provide copies of the summary of the code to all students in an age-appropriate, plain language version. Our students at the high school appear to get it in their agenda book, and we go over it in opening day with them. So every year it is reviewed with them. Copies need to be made available for review by students and parents. It is on the district website. Part of it is contained in the district calendar and, again, in their student agendas. And we need to provide all new employees with copy of the current code of conduct. It is the board's responsibility to provide in-service educational programs for staff for effective implementation of the code in the Division for All Students Act. And hopefully, Mrs. Orcat and myself are going away next Thursday or Friday to get the second part of the OVAAS training. And so hopefully, we can bring it back and share it with the district.
So Ms. McInnes, if we could just back up for a minute? I don't know why I'm talking into that. It basically states that the code of conduct will be filed with the commissioner no later than 30 days after adoption, but you're not asking the board to adopt this plan today?
Not at this time.
So could you talk about what you are? Yep. And when will it be brought for them to adopt?
I think in the August meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
The DASSA or the Division for All Students Act Committee are Joe Grechville, teacher at the GLP; Colin Pratt, teacher at the Junior-Senior High School; John McCarthy; the Eden Police Department; Anne McCannady, GLP and elementary teacher; myself; Kelly Oregon Rosa, teacher at the GLP; Tammy Orcat, guidance counselor at Eden Elementary; Debbie Cobble, director of the Eden Boys and Girls Club; Andrew Rachecky, who was a student council rep at the high school; Shannon Rice, who was a parent; and Mary Sweeney, who was a teacher at the Junior-Senior High School, was also working out with Cameron Campbell and along with Mrs. Angela, the superintendent.
Is Andrew, didn't he graduate this year?
I think he's a senior.
Is he staying on with this?
No. He was, when we started this process for the 12-13 school year, he was the rep up until graduation at the end of June. Now in September, usually it's the new president, the student council, that will replace him.
So that's the 2012-2013 committee?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Can you give a brief overview of that?
We have to have a board meeting in July or August. And so that will be the one. She's presenting it now. We'll present it again in July or August, and then you can go.
Is there a code of conduct for the parking lot for student drivers?
Yes.
That would be part of the high school?
That'd be part of the high school. In their agenda books, driving is addressed about peeling tires, doing donuts, illegal parking. And we go over with them during orientation.
Why was that not included in here?
It might be in the complete, I don't think, because it's more of a school. It's not a district because we don't have student drivers at the GLP or the elementary.
Oh, okay.
So it's specific for directly up here. Any other questions?
I do have a question. Back on, like, the first or second page. It starts with the tube tops, halter tops, spaghetti straps. I think the cleavage is very distracting. And I wonder if that's addressed at all, or if you could. Does the board have anything to throw? I think that's very...
This says low-cut tops.
I like the word cleavage in there. Does anyone have any objections to that at all? I mean, you want to be specific about it.
What number?
What happens if someone has a tube top on?
Again, we ask them to simply, they have the opportunity to call home and have a parent bring something in. They can go down and put on their gym T-shirt. Or nine times out of 10, they'll find something from a friend and cover themselves up.
Now, what if this is repetitive?
Then if it's repetitive, the progression, there's a chart. It could be a warning the first time, detention the second time, in-school suspension the third time. But you need to realize that each time that this situation is addressed, parents receive a written notification home.
And tank tops were the other one. Why not just eliminate them?
You could. You'd have to eliminate them at all three buildings and...
That's during summer months because they don't...
It's very hot on the second floor.
The tank tops don't cause as much trouble.
Pardon me?
The tank tops don't appear to cause as much trouble because they're usually not low. So they're maybe thin here that we can control in the building, but it gets in the 90s on the second floor. It's the shirts that have the one strap, no strap.
Or the ones, as you said, that are low-cut.
Two arms and no front.
Those are the ones that we mainly address.
One thing I would say is that this is an ongoing process. We made a lot of changes to this this year. And as we go forward, if this is implemented, we're going to meet again in October and look at it and look at how it's working out. And we can always look at other changes. As I said, it's a living document. It's not something that's carved in stone forever.
It continues to change every year. The cyberbullying is all new. We've never had that. So it changes, and it might even change again for next year.
Now, what about, I know that it's talking about teachers, and God forbid, I think we have wonderful teachers here, but if a teacher or an administrator or someone is swearing or using foul language, anyone can report that?
Absolutely.
And who, do you write that up? Are you in charge of that also?
Yes, it can be reported to myself when Mr. Graff is building principal, and we will sit down and address it and talk with the teacher. Absolutely.
Now, what if that becomes repetitive?
Well, then, it goes, if it gets, if it's repetitive for me, the next step would be to take it to the superintendent, and she would have to follow through on it. If it's teacher disciplinary. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Pratt.
So just to answer the question that you had, Mr. Campbell, this is a summary of it. And so what Mrs. Tomasula will do for the next one is have anybody come forward that has questions or concerns on it. It'll go up on our website as a draft form for tentative until August, in which case we'd bring up to the board to adopt.
That's a good point. This is not the code of conduct. The code of conduct is 33 pages, I think.
33 pages. This is just a summary.
That's right.
Because there's a lot of things that I did not touch on, like disciplining students of special ed. We did not go over a lot of the other policies here at the school. But the document itself is 33 pages long. While I'm up here, can I go on to the...
Is everybody okay?
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Martin asked me to introduce the Safety Committee to you, and that's on the very last page of the handout. I included it for you. Dave Martin is going to be the coordinator for the district. Robert Suda is going to be Jacob Hutch Insurance Agency representative. Michael Centrone is going to be the Utica Mutual Insurance Company representative. Rose Hacketthorne will represent the Eden Transportation Department. Mary Banco will be the support staff representative. John McCarthy will represent the Eden Emergency Services. I, myself, will be the high school rep. Lauren Carter will be the representative from the GLP. Mark Craft will be the representative for Eden Elementary. Lucinda Tarstet will be technology representative. Tom Murphy, our director of finance, will sit in on it. And Glenn Bellis, the town of Eden supervisor of community, will be our community representative. To be announced yet, the who on the board would like to represent will be the representative for the Safety Committee. And we will need a teacher rep, which we will announce in September. And he just wanted to make you familiar with the new members and the Safety Committee.
Ask a question?
Sure. Do you have anybody representing the support staff?
Your Eden support staff, Mary Banco, we're the fifth one down.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have anybody? I mean, I see that you have John here, McCarthy, for the police. But do we have anything from the fire and the E&amp;T section?
He represents both because he's on both.
He's on, yeah.
Yeah, he's on the Eden Emergency Squad and...
Is he still in the fire department?
He's E.T., yeah.
Oh, E.T.?
He's E.T. Fire.
Well, since we're on this, should we, I would say, Paul for this one?
All favor.
Let's see how he's going to be, right?
That's fine. I would enjoy that.
And actually, I just want to take a moment to thank Pat for her service chairing this committee for so long. Dave Martin is taking over just in terms of the district perspective. Pat will still be remaining as the building representative. And coming on to the committee again, which hasn't been for several years, again, Bob Sada and Mike Centrone from the insurance side. Because number one, our district does receive a 10% discount on our insurance for following through on the safety. Not only is it good for dollars and cents, obviously, the increased focus this year on safety makes sense for student safety.
I would also state that by having these people on this committee that I feel comfortable not having a coser through Erie 2, which is a $13,000 coser. So I'm really grateful that everybody will sit on this.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Business report.
Okay. I just have two items for the agenda. The first would be the Race to the Top Grant. One of the reasons why I put that on here now is on June 30th, we did have to file our year-end financials as to how much we spent on the grant. This is a two-year grant that we actually have for professional development. We have contracted through BOSI's. And it is actually for network teams as well as APPR training, again, professional development. Our budget for the first year was about $8,800. Of that, we spent this year $5,036. My initial question, and I did check with the state, are we able to roll over any unused dollars? We are, so that's a good thing. So we were budgeted for $17,000 next year. We can add those extra three on there. So we're looking at about $21,200 for professional development for next year. And I'm sure we will use every cent of that. So we're right on track, and the state is very happy with us right now. So I just wanted to let everyone know that.
Does anybody know what the money was spent on?
Again, professional development through BOSI's. BOSI's, our teachers went to BOSI's training. In fact, if Mr. Graff is still here, if he has anything he would like to add to that, he could probably talk world...
I would do the assessment scoring.
Right.
That was a huge piece of it.
All APPR-related staff.
Everybody. This is actually all of the training for any staff that's part of APPR. And so this is the money that's coming into you because we are part of Race to the Top. And I would say that we've probably spent three times what they gave us. But that's Race to the Top, and that's the way that the mandates are from state ed.
If we spent three times that, why is it only five?
Because our grant was only for the 25. So how we use it between this year and next year, the focus really is more for next year. But again, we only get 25, no matter how much we as a district are actually spending, so.
But you have to be trained.
Correct.
So the principals can't evaluate a teacher unless they're trained. I was trained in my former district, so you don't have to train me. Tom wasn't trained, so he couldn't. Not that I would put him in that. But Lauren is, Lucinda is, all the rest of the administrators are.
Any questions on our TTT? Okay, and food service contract with the state. We briefly touched on it with our food service contract extension. Now that's officially extended by the board that you approved it. Now, we already have a contract with Personal Touch that now will be filed with the state by the end of July. It needs to actually be in. We already have it in hand, so we're good to go on that as well. So be ready for the call.
What's the tax rate?
The tax rate, we're getting the information in from each of the towns now, the tax information. I don't have all them in as of yet. As soon as they all come in, we do need to have a special meeting to set the tax rate for the district. We do know the tax levy was... We do know the tax levy was, you know, about $10,800,000 roughly. Yeah, a little bit more than that. But now then that it has to translate into a tax rate. And it's going to be different for every town based on their house assessment and all that, which I can certainly go into detail.
Is there a date that you have to do that by?
It's going to have to be done by August and I don't have the date off the top of my head.
Early August, late August?
I'd have to check that out for you.
That would be good to know.
Anything else for me?
Yeah, just review that one more time. I think it's...
Okay.
Just, just go over that one more time.
So when we set the overall budget of $25,700,000, again, approximately, I'm off by a few dollars, but roughly 25,700. When you set that, I mean, it comes from a multitude of sources. And one of the biggest portion, one of the biggest sources is obviously, you know, from the taxpayers here. So for that, we set for the taxpayers, it was a 2% increase. So we're at roughly $10,800-some-thousand. So for that 10,800, now you need to divide that out amongst all the towns. And the state actually has a formula set up for equalization. And what that does is for every town, $100,000 home is not the same everywhere. So, so the state has said, okay, you know, $100,000 in Williamsville, we need to equate with $100,000 in Barker. Just so everyone's on a level playing field. So they have very specific formulas they set up to do that, which I can actually show you in a presentation, I believe. I think you've had that in the past, but we can show that again, how they actually come up with that formula. So we divvy up amongst all the towns, so everybody gets their own tax rate, which makes an equal sharing of that tax burden.
Would you consider doing that presentation?
Absolutely.
The date, the date that we do the tax rate? Before they approve it?
Yes, absolutely. Well, part of it is transparency, so I'd be more than happy to show everyone the tax rate and how we came up with that.
That's mine. So we have to start with Mark Graff. Where's Mark? So, Mark Graff, congratulations. Mark is, has asked and has been granted the opportunity to transfer to Eden Elementary School, so Mark. I, I must say that I have heard not one concern or negative comment from any faculty or staff member or community member about Mark at the elementary school. They are thrilled that you're coming. They see you as a, an experienced, objective face who can help to move the elementary school forward, especially as Mr. Schaefer retires. And so I, I thank you for bringing that forward and I, I think it's a big step and good for you and good for the district. So thank you. You're welcome. There is a letter in the Board Packet, which was written to the Board of Education in regards to Mrs. Lauren Carter and her role as Director for Curriculum Instruction this past year. It is a wonderful letter to an administrator who has put her heart and soul into a position that's been very difficult to do also as an elementary principal. And so I just wanted to share that with you because I thought it was certainly telling of what I've noticed about Mrs. Carter in my short time here. There's also a Section 6 letter for Class B-1 softball tighter. Where's Marissa? Do you want to talk about that one for a minute? It's yours. You should talk. Come on, come on. So this was a recognition by NISBA.
This was a recognition from the section that girls softball this year won the B-1 best championship. It was the first time since, it was 1990 that the girls won it. And then we played in the overall game.
It was great. It was really good. And we have two openings now for administrative positions. One is for the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Staff Development. That posting opened and did close. We did screening interviews today of applicants and we will go for a second round. And if there's anybody on the board that's interested in sitting on that, please give Barb Thomasua a call and she'll give you the date and times and you're certainly welcome to sit. After that second round, if there are still questions if I, from that, then they will come and sit at a third round with me and I will make my recommendation to the Board of Education. For the junior, senior high school principal posting, we did post originally, but we were originally posted for an elementary position. Now we are posted for junior, senior high school positions, so we went back out. That position, or that posting will not close until July 10th, in which case we will actually go to task groups or focus groups on that posting since we will have a group of students, we'll have a group of teachers and CSCA, a group of parents and community. They will come to the Board of Education for an interview of those of you who are available. That's on the 17th of July in the evening, starting at 6:00. I'm hoping that all of the board members can attend. You will see them before the focus groups and make recommendations on who goes forward. And then there'll be positions after that. I will be in a desperate need of a board meeting to appoint because I can't, I can't bring them on until the board appoints them and I can't wait until August to do that. So I will be hoping that there are some dates in the third or fourth week of July that the board can have a meeting to, a special meeting to appoint. Remembering that Tom's also going to need a special meeting for the tax rate. But that's not until August. No, because his is until August and I really can't wait that long. In the meantime, Mark Graff is doing both for no extra salary.
Should we talk about that now?
I would, that would be great. I would feel much better. Can you hear? Can you hear Barb?
Did you guys get a chance?
I will be gone. I have responded that I will be here.
Will or won't?
I will be. I'm flying to Texas tomorrow, but I hope to have completed it.
The 24th?
For the 24th? I'm here on the 24th.
I am.
I'm here.
That's four. And Scott, possibly, we don't know. It's possible, yes.
So right now you have four?
Scott, recent time for...
He's on vacation right now.
He's in Yosemite or somewhere like that. I don't think he might have wireless access.
It's one of those places we made it.
Is four good enough assurance or should we look at another date?
That's up to you as a board if you're comfortable with that.
I'm comfortable.
You will have seen them if you come to the board interviews on the 17th. And so my recommendation is, is that from those board interviews, you don't send anybody forward that you're not comfortable with. And it won't come as a surprise at the board meeting because I'll push it out on my memo.
Patty, are you going to be able to be here the 17th? That you can meet some of these people anyways?
So you would feel comfortable who's going forward?
I will not be.
Would you be here on the 24th?
That is, I'm hopefully will be back by the 19th, but you know.
So you could be here that night? And Scott, we don't know, right? And Mike?
I, I'm only assuming he's on vacation now. He's not going to go again. But you never know.
He just started a new job and everything.
Oh, he did? Did he?
So he probably hadn't accrued that much vacation.
The 24th is the earliest date that I can be ready, so if you're comfortable with that, that would be wonderful.
Let's, let's go. We schedule it and we can get everybody confirmed. It appears to be a problem a couple of weeks before we'll change.
We can get a confirmation from Scott, yeah. Because he didn't have any deadlines. That's four people. No one to split the deadline.
That's a good point. Special board meeting, what time would you want to start?
7:00.
7:00 on the 24th? And this would be for the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Staff Development and the Junior Senior High School Principal? Thank you very much.
That's two separate positions.
It is two separate positions, yes. What do you think, Mark? Should it be one? Just kidding.
And then there will be a special board meeting at the beginning of August to take care of...
Well, we don't know if it's going to be at the beginning of August. Tom's going to check and find out what the drop dead date is for the tax rate and then he'll ask. And then he'll see if we can't roll it into your regular August meeting. Right?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have?
So we have a July 17th and then a July 24th.
The July 17th is the Board of Ed interview from approximately 6 till 9 at night. It is with the board and with me. And the July 24th is for appointment and there will be focus groups for the principalship in between those dates.
Then I guess we should probably do the committee thing now.
I want to go over those committees again. I want to run it down.
Good. May I ask, just simply because I wasn't here last year, just to clarify the role of each of the subcommittees so I know that I have it right?
What page was that?
I'm trying to find it.
6.
6. Roman numeral 7B4.
Personnel.
And I'd like to put on record that Paul Shepherd's already up for two.
Well, he's going to have three soon.
All in favor?
How come I can't find it?
I can state to you that the purpose that I would hope that the Personnel Subcommittee would be is if in fact we have perhaps some issues that are coming forward with personnel, either positive, negative, hirings, a change in position, so that I don't have to wait an entire month until we have an executive session. So that would be the purpose for me with Personnel.
Well, then Patty wants to be on Personnel. That was one that I actually skipped out, I guess, when I was going back through the list.
I don't think we had one last year for Personnel.
You did not.
The one I, the one I had was seven committees and that would make it an eighth now.
Yep, you did not last year and so what I would do is I would bring it forward to the entire board during the executive session. You can continue to do that, just understanding that we meet once a month.
I mean, but Personnel would still need to be discussed in an executive session.
Yes, it would.
Does anyone else want Personnel Committee then? You said it's Patty.
We should have a backup.
I, I wouldn't mind being on that one.
All right, then the Audit Committee.
Audit?
Myself and Mr. Breeden.
What is the Audit Committee?
Negotiations.
Can you tell me the other? I'm sorry, again, I missed it.
Uh, myself and Mike.
Okay.
Negotiations, Scott and Callan. Curriculum, I had Barb and Patty. And then Infrastructure, Technology. Is that one on this list here?
Mike.
And plus this, Technology.
What was the last one you just stated?
The Curriculum one.
That was Barb and Patty?
Yep, and then Infrastructure, Technology, I have Breeden and Scott Henderson. And Legal and Policy, Callan and Patty.
I don't know. She may have three. I can't tell.
Which one did you just put me on?
Legal and Policy?
Yeah, that's three she's in.
Well...
I don't know if I want that one. Do I have a choice?
No.
No.
All right, Paul. Paul and...
I thought you would want Policy. All right, then I'll stick myself on that one.
Is Facilities separate from Technology on your list?
Yes.
Okay.
And we had a, didn't we have Student Wellness last year too?
We did, but I don't think we ever met. In fact, one of the goals was to look into the food, the food situation. We got busy with other things and we never...
Plus the state, the state rolled in and said, this is what you have to do because it's better for the kids.
Scrap the Student Wellness one?
I think so.
What does everybody else think? Maybe, what do you guys think? Do you want to keep the Health and Wellness?
It was newly created last year, Student Wellness.
If you never met, I mean, I would say that, as you've never met, I would say we should continue.
Good, you just got off of one, huh? Then the one that I thought we should add was like on the Legislative Committee, something a lot of people this year were talking about, we should meet more with our state reps. And I put myself and Paul on that one, as you had mentioned before that you were interested in. And then Personnel, Patty and Barb.
And did you do Facilities?
On my list that I had was Infrastructure, Technology together.
Facilities, Infrastructure, Technology together?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we can, me and Scott will, you know, do both duties.
Understood.
So Facilities, me and Scott, and Technology for me and Scott.
Are some of these the same as people who are on them from this year?
Yes. Correct.
Okay. Okay, I understand.
It's nice to have some continuity.
The, the subcommittees and the only ones that have met since I have been here was the policy, the legal policy. But for the most part, what will happen is if in fact they fall into the realm of an administrator, we will meet most likely in my office because the policy book is so big and we can't make copies of it. We've tried. We do post them. They are considered an open meeting because they're making decisions at these, even though there's two people that are on the board. And the administrators come if in fact you have questions or can clarify. The Board of Education for Policy will send updates. Legislative would be the same. There would be things that would come from NISBA in terms of legislative. So that would be a really good one as well. And there may be administrators that want to sit on some of those with you.
And any board member can go to any of the committees?
Any board member can go to any because it's, it's already posted. So since it's posted, you don't need to worry about it being a quorum.
And then the other thing was that we thought, or I thought I should say is, a lot of people were saying that we didn't communicate well last year. And so we thought we would have like a liaison for each board member would have a different union or organization. So we now have a liaison for the Teachers Union/Transportation is myself. And then CSCA would be Scott Henderson. Administrative Union, I put Patty on that. And PTA, Barb, Boosters, Breeden. Grounds and Transportation, or Grounds and Transportation Director would be Paul Shepherd.
I want that one. That's okay, Paul. You can have it.
Grounds and Transportation?
Correct. Transportation Director. So I didn't know the name of that union for Rose and...
Oh, the Supervisory?
Yeah, the Supervisory.
Okay. There you go.
And who was that?
Paul.
Paul.
Okay.
And then Chair Decision Making Committee would be Callan. I think that covers mostly all of them.
Barb, did you get that? Wow. You're impressive.
Squash any rumors or if there's a problem, come to us. Each one, and they'll have someone they can go to and they can address them before they grow.
So we would need to post this someplace so people would see it. One of the questions that I would say too in my time here is, is that there are events that occur and it would be really great if in fact as board members, if we can make a concerted effort to try to be at a lot of the community events that might not necessarily be ones that we would go to, just so that we get a full K-12 idea. Many of you are parents, so you go anyways, but it would be nice to be able to go to some of the other ones too.
I do have something to say. It said in here that we were going to use the Sun and the Springville Gazette, was it? Or Springville Paper to advertise things in it? Is there a reason why we're not using the Penny Saver? Because the Penny Saver is more free and the Sun... Oh, okay. I didn't know that.
The law designates that they have to be people that we pay?
Paid subscription to the service.
Right. Oh, that people have to pay for?
Because some people don't have this, you know, some people don't get it.
So we do the Penny Saver, the Hamburg Sun and the Journal? We do the Penny Saver, the Hamburg Sun and the Journal?
And why would we use Springville instead of the Penny? Do we have to have two that were paid?
Yeah, we have two and I don't remember why they use the Springville Journal. Probably because the Penny Saver, the other Penny Saver.
We border up against their...
And you've got Concord in Boston.
Yeah, we border right up against their district.
You actually have them.
Have some overlap. Have some overlap.
I don't think a lot of them. So do we have to have two paid?
Yes.
You're kidding.
Isn't that wild?
It's New York State.
And when it comes time for budget vote, we have to put it into both and pay for both. As a legal notice.
Can I jump back to the liaison thing? So is the idea that we would go out and meet with our respective assigned group?
Correct.
And then hear their ideas or whatever, and then bring them back to the board?
Got it.
Give them a better communication.
Yeah, so they actually feel like they're being heard. A lot of people I felt last year felt so they weren't heard throughout the process, whether that's true or not. Hopefully this will take care of that problem.
And vice versa. If there's information from the board, we can take that to them.
We can take that to them. So the other question I have is, on these committees that we're on, I honestly was not very active in them last year at all. So if I'm on the Personnel Committee, who is in charge of, I go back to my list here, who's in charge of Personnel? Do they meet once a month?
No, only if... This question.
Do we have to read the whole thing out?
I don't.
No, I don't think so. We created the, that's what we were doing, was actually creating the subcommittees.
So you don't need to.
Not necessarily appointing the people onto the subcommittees.
So you're good. Okay.
Well, didn't we add then that Legislative Committee?
That's a good point.
And liaisons, yeah.
Okay, move to create an additional Subcommittee, the Legislative Subcommittee.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That should be embraced. What's it then? All right, then I motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.